So good morning, this is the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Thursday, August 11th, 2022. It is 9:03 a.m. This is set to go until 10 a.m. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in Building 1, Room 280. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mahia, I'm the Chair of the Board, joining me via Zoom. Vice Chair Ty Mensah in the boardroom, and Commissioner Gary Edwards is in transit. You're just walking in. Sorry, you're right out of camera, so Commissioner Gary Edwards has just joined us in the boardroom as well. We have County Manager Ramiro Chavez in the boardroom as well, and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell joining us via Zoom. We have Auditor Mary Hall who's joined us this morning, and we have many guests to discuss the Fair Vote. And they're gonna, Fair Vote Washington Rank Choice Voting. This is an informational session. So I'm not sure if we could go through introductions, and then we can start with the presentation.
Great, thank you so much. So I am Betsy Perkins, and I am a Lacey resident and teacher, and I'm going to kind of facilitate our end of the presentation today. Yeah, we have lots of friends here in the room to talk about ranked choice voting with you. We are going to present for a little bit here the benefits. It's one thing that unites us all here.
Can you hear her and make out everything that's being said? Boy, that volume.
I can hear her just fine. Can you not hear?
I can hear.
I don't know. No, I can hear everything. It's kind of echo back and somehow in there.
There is a little bit of echo to the voice that makes it a little hard to distinguish, but I don't know. I mean, I was tracking everything, but it just took a little bit of extra effort.
Okay, I'll try to pay closer attention.
Maybe you can speak a little louder? That would be great.
Okay, I'll speak a little louder and I'll speak a little slower.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, and maybe folks who are not speaking can mute as well while they're listening. So again, I'm Betsy Perkins. I'm a volunteer with Fair Vote Washington, which is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization working to bring ranked choice voting to voters in Washington. The organization has existed for five years. Many of us in the room are also volunteers with that organization, and most of us are residents in Thurston County. We do have some special guests, as Carolyn May pointed out. Mary Hall is here with us. We're super glad. She has a lot of expertise, obviously, and experience with voting and with ranked choice voting. And we also have Lisa Arrow from Fair Vote Washington. She is the Director. She's coming to us from Michigan. And then I will let people, as they speak, introduce themselves. I think that probably would be best, because really, really, truly, after we present a little bit about why we're here and why we think ranked choice voting is so important and is a better way to vote and is something that we would love to see as an option for voters in Washington. We also think it's really important to let you have some time, Commissioners, to ask questions. Let us know about concerns that you have, things you've heard about ranked choice voting. That's what's most valuable for your time, since you've given us your time this morning. So I will say briefly, I did make a slideshow. I don't know that it's going to be needed. It is there. It was shared with you, and I could definitely share it in the chat or also present it here on the screen, if you'd like. But in short, ranked choice voting is a way of voting where rather than...
Excuse me, would you have the PowerPoint presentation? And I think it would be great to put it on the screen. I'll give you the option for you to share your screen. I also have the PowerPoint here, and I can navigate that for you. What is your choice?
Okay. Sure, we can show that, and maybe I'll kind of briefly go through it. Then we'll let our folks who are going to speak to ranked choice voting and benefits, why they work on this. Maybe we can stop screen sharing at that point, and then we'll open it up for questions. Yeah, if you feel like you could put the screen share on your end, that would be fabulous. Excellent.
Go ahead.
Okay, and you can go to the next page. So, and to the next page, please. So in ranked choice voting, here is an example. We rank all the time. It's very simple. In ranked choice voting, you pick, you rank your candidates rather than pick one. So if these are your candidates' pie choices, next slide, please. You would rank in order, your preference of your pie choices. If one of these, if one of these candidates got the majority of the votes, they would win, 50% plus one. If they didn't, then the bottom candidate would be eliminated, and recount would happen. So, next slide, please. And I'm being very brief in this, because mostly we weren't going to show the slides too much. Go ahead and click. And you can click, 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 click. To us, the benefits of ranked choice voting that we see, sincere voting. People can vote for who they really want. Voters have more voices and more choices, and we'll talk more about this with our speakers. There's less polarization. There are more civil campaigns, and it can save time and cost. It's also well-tested. Next slide, please. Here you see, this is the Minneapolis Merrill Candidates Race. And in this race, you had many more candidates, many more voices, more choices for the candidates. Next slide, please. And also in New York City. The New York City Council now has 31, New York City used ranked choice voting in their recent elections. 31 of the 51 seats are women. Before, there were only 18 women on the council, and 25 of those women are women of color. We think that the more voices, more choices, just a benefit as we work for equitable representation in Washington. Next slide, please. It does promote civil campaigns. You see here two elections where candidates actually ran together, in a sense, because you are going to be, you are one of many candidates. You're not going to tear your candidate down. You might even, like in the New York City Merrill Race, you might even let the public know that you are going to vote for your other candidate in this candidate race of Garcia and Yang. They actually said, "This is going to be my second choice vote on my ballot, because I, we have similar campaign, we have similar objectives." So it's not as much negative campaigning. Next slide, please. RCV can save money. I'm not going to talk a lot about this, because Lisa and Mary really can tell you the details, but if you combine a primary and a general election, it can actually save the candidates money, and it can also save the taxpayers money. Next slide. It is used all over the nation, is used all over the world. You see here, many, many, many states in different ways are using ranked choice voting. In Washington, we've been working on a local options bill and presidential primary bill. And you can see those things are used all over the nation. Next slide, please. Cities across Washington have written resolutions. Olympia is right there, as you see. Olympia wrote a resolution in favor of the local options bill, which would allow jurisdictions to use ranked choice voting if they wished. But you can see here, many other cities have also written resolutions in favor of. Most cannot use it currently legally. Next slide. There is the Olympia City Council. Olympia cannot use ranked choice voting at this time, but they did use ranked choice voting with the help of Mary Hall and Lisa. Fair Vote Washington helped them use it to replace a member on their council, and it was very successful. So we love showing this picture. That was in 2020. Next slide. There are two ballot measures, or three ballot measures, as you can see here. Clark County, San Juan County, and City of Seattle all will have RCV ballot measures on the ballot in November. Next slide. And then our plans for 2023 are the local options bill and presidential primaries bill using ranked choice voting. All right, you can end slideshow. I'm going to turn it over now to, thank you, I went really fast. I wasn't planning on sharing that slide. So you may have questions, you might want to know more, and we can definitely delve into that. Katie Raines and Tim and Jean Moss are going to say a little bit about why ranked choice voting is important to them. Katie, you want to start?
Thank you, Betsy. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you all for your time today. My name is Katie Raines. I have been a resident and voter, active voter, and all but just a handful of primaries where I missed the deadline for the last 15 years. So I am, this is dear to me. Participation and governance is really dear to me. I wanted to be part of today's conversation, just to let you all know. I've had a very full life. I think I've prospered with many of you in my tenure as Director of the Local Organization Grub. In the last number of years, I've worked with the Washington State Department of Agriculture and been charged with addressing food security, particularly during COVID-19. That work is still unfolding, as many families are still hungry. Participation in Fair Vote is the only civic engagement that I have had time for outside of my job, and it's the main thing that I have chosen to prioritize, whatever remaining energy I have, to contribute to our community. The reason for that, for me, is that it seems that many folks on both sides of the aisle, on all sides of the political spectrum, are questioning the efficacy of democracy in our country right now. And I wonder if perhaps it's not democracy that's the problem, but perhaps the way that we're voting. And if we were to have a preference beyond our first choice, could we all see more of the qualities in candidates that we want? Could we have more options and feel more able to explore and affirm our support for the type of positions that different candidates are taking, if we were able to rank our candidates on each ballot? So, as Betsy mentioned, and she'll talk a little bit more about later, there is a local options bill. Right now, our community can't even consider the possibility of using ranked choice voting, and we'd really like to be able to. We'd like to have more representative government and more ability to hear from more candidates and have our voices heard. I think that this would be really critical, having worked with young people in the past. We're going to need to change the way we do business to keep voters engaged in the coming years. It's been a hard time for many, if not all, and so I thank you for your time. We look forward to your questions.
Am I up? All right, I assume I'm up. Hi, I'm Tim Kerfoot. I live out beyond Yelm, towards Mount Rainier. And I've been involved in politics for, well, since my retirement. In 2016, I was a little distressed by the Republican Party, so I gave up my Republican registration and did switch to the Democrats, and I've stayed involved. I found since moving to Washington from Kansas, there seems to be a common thought in Thurston County that we're politically split east and west. The west full of progressives, the east full of conservatives. As an avowed, I guess, east side progressive, I've been involved in a lot of discussions out here. Fruitful discussions, I think. And as everybody knows, we finished our primary season last week. In CD3, I've had several discussions, that's Congressional District 3, which I'm part of, on the outcome for the congressional seat. My conservative friends have, they've wondered why Joe Kent can't just be declared the victor. They don't understand why we have to go to a general election, because if you look at the breakout of the votes, it's very clear that we have a large majority, a substantial majority of votes for the Republican. I've gotten into the discussion with them and said, "Well, you know, actually, if we had ranked choice voting, we wouldn't go to the general. Joe Kent would be declared the winner." Now, I'm not in favor of Joe Kent winning, but on the other hand, if over, well over 50% of the people say, "Look, I'm a Republican. I'll always be a Republican, and I will vote for whoever the candidate is." I agree with my conservative friends. I don't see why we should go to a general. So the discussion revolved around, one, a waste of time, and as Betsy's already mentioned, we could save a lot of money, both from the candidates and from our auditor's office, by not having this general. The RCV would solve that problem. I think a lot of my conservative friends who initially said, "This is just simply another liberal progressive boondoggle", I think they're starting to have second thoughts, and I've seen some eyes light up, and we continue to have discussions. So I guess my end thought here is, this is a nonpartisan issue. It's an attempt to make voting more efficient and, quite frankly, to save some dollars. Thanks so much.
I'll go next. Thanks for this opportunity of hearing us, Commissioners. It's really good to be here. And my name is Jean Moss. I live just outside of Tonin. I've been here for about 28 years. And I have just recently come to know a little bit about ranked choice voting, and I got to say, I'm going to repeat some of what has already been said as far as costs go. I am concerned of the cost of campaigns for the county, as well as for the candidates. And I think that some people who are not wealthy are just not going to go for it, even though they might be really good candidates. So I think it's just a barrier in that way for us to have a primary as well as a general. So if, you know, I'd be delighted if we could reduce the costs and maybe reduce or eliminate the primaries and just get right to the general. And again, the second point is, I just hear a lot of people talking about how they don't know if their vote counts, and people are trying to guess like, who has a good chance? And so all of that, all of that mystery or suspense or anxiety over really trying to second-guess other voters to come up with the one who's really likely to win. It's just, it's just not, it's not productive, and it's not very useful for us to be looking at everybody else to try to, you know, do what we think is personally right. So I also hear a lot of people talking about how, you know, they don't like either of the final candidates, so they're just not going to bother voting. In a system like ranked choice voting, I think, could encourage more people to participate and give us, you know, like a straighter understanding of what our vote is going to go for, and our vote is actually going to count, going to count. So I just think that voting for the ones who have our highest level of trust and respect is the way that most of us want to vote, and I think, let it fall where it does. We're not all going to get what we want, but that's democracy for you. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing. We, I don't know if Mary or Lisa would like to say anything in response to what was presented there, clear up anything that I made a mistake on, or, but if they don't, we would like to open the floor to the Commissioners to ask, ask us. Ask us what you want to know, any concerns that you have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you like to entertain questions with the Commissioners?
Yes. So I was going to leave the floor to Mary first, to see if she wanted to kind of say anything, and then I was going to open it up for questions.
Sure, I'd be happy to say a few things. I do have actually quite a bit of experience with ranked choice voting, because in 2008 and 2009, when I was running elections in Pierce County, they actually conducted all their county races, I believe with the exception of prosecutor, using ranked choice voting. I think there are a lot of points that are very valid. I think it does keep campaigns a little nicer, because, you know, if you don't get a person's first vote, you want to get their second vote, because the votes transfer to the next candidate. The person with the lowest number of votes gets eliminated, and the votes that they had for the second candidate get given to whoever that candidate is. So I have, I don't really have any reservations about doing ranked choice voting, however it would take legislative action, because we're not a charter county, and the reason Pierce County could do it is because they were a charter county, and they have home rules. So that was actually voted in as a charter amendment. And our current system is capable of conducting both type of elections simultaneously. So I would not have any concerns conducting that type of election in Thurston County. I always take the philosophy regarding legislation as, you know, I do what the law tells me to do, and I really try not to take sides. Although I must say, I did have a great time doing the ranked choice voting election for Olympia, so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Mary. With that, I will pass it on to questions. Commissioner Edwards, we will start with you, sir.
I guess my first question would be for Mary. Why was the prosecuting attorney not included in that race in Pierce County?
Because that's how the freeholders set up the amendment. So it was simply the way it was written into the charter.
So a charter could have the election process basically any way they set it up? Is that what you're saying? And it does not affect state law or statewide results or anything like that?
Yeah, when you're a charter county, you have a lot more leeway. I mean, it's home rule. So you can write, write your charter, and it doesn't necessarily have to conform with state law. So I'm not an expert in that area, but it's just how the freeholders chose to put it on the ballot.
Would this type of an election work in areas that could use it and do use it possibly? And those that don't? I mean, let's take a congressional district that is multi-jurisdictional, for an example. Oftentimes, a candidate will cover several counties and municipalities. So some would vote that way, and some would not. Is that, that doesn't seem like it would blend very well together. So I'm wondering, I mean, I almost see this as an absolute necessity for the legislature to pick the process and through, I don't know how it affects our constitution. Do we need a constitutional change? Or I'm, this is just, the way I'm looking at this, this is a seed being planted, I guess, by this group. by this group. Actually, how did this get on our agenda? I'm kinda curious.
It was a request by the group.
By the group itself to come forward?
So we honored the request to give this information.
No, I'm fine with it. I'm just wondering how it got here. I do have a lot of questions. I'm neither for nor against. I'm kinda like Tim. I've had my problems with partisan politics. And I, I've held office both as a partisan elected official and as an independent individual. So I tried to get the legislation changed. When I was sheriff in this county for five terms, every year I tried to get it changed to nonpartisan. The legislature would never go along with that, for whatever reason. They'd always say it was the other guy's fault that we couldn't get it, you know, one party yelled out or not. And consequently, I never got any money from the Republican Party during those five terms that I ran as a Republican, because they weren't very happy with me either, I guess. So it must cause a rub when you challenge the system. Is that what happens?
So first, let me go over how it has to happen in law to be able to do different types of elections. The reason that Pierce County could do their county races is because they were the county races. So in that election, the legislative races still were using plurality voting. It would require the state to put into law that the state was going to do ranked choice voting. So far, Alaska and I believe it's Maine, use ranked choice voting for even their congressional candidates. But even if, say Thurston County voted to conduct our county officials using ranked choice voting, congressional races would still be plurality voting because we don't have jurisdiction over those elections. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and congressional and legislative races as well, right?
And legislative races, yes. So I believe the legislation that's going to be passed this year would simply give local jurisdictions the option. Because right now, even if you wanted to use ranked choice voting, you can't. But the legislation that's going to be introduced, if passed, would allow any county that's not a charter county to choose to conduct county elections that way, or any city. Because right now, cities can't conduct ranked choice voting unless they're a charter city. So that's what this enabling legislation would do.
So I guess, is the group looking for some kind of an endorsement on the process? Is that it? I mean, I'm a long ways from an endorsement, don't get me wrong. This is all new to me and I'd wanna study it and get all the pros and cons and see how it works. To be honest with you, municipalities that have, I grew up here in Olympia and I don't agree with many things that the city of Olympia does. So using them as an example, maybe isn't the best thing to use for me. You know, I don't wanna get into, this used to be a perfect little community some years back. It's been ruined in my estimation, but I hope we'll get it straightened out at some point. But anyway, I'm very interested in hearing more, but I'm certainly not anywhere near a commitment, one way or the other. So I'll let my seatmates jump in there, see what they've got to say.
Well, Commissioner Edward, you just gave us the perfect segue. I would like to pop in here with my little part and then once again, go back to questions from all of you. You have heard about the growing momentum for this in the state. It's appearing on three ballots in different counties, different charter counties. I can tell you as somebody, oh, my name is Becky Liebman, by the way, and I've lived in, I've lived in the area mainly in the county for over 50 years. I can tell you as somebody who's been a volunteer tabler over the last five years in Thurston County, there is growing momentum right here. It used to be five years ago, we would have to coax people up to our tables. Now people just stride up to our tables. Yes, we want to have this conversation of the possibility of more voices and more choices, the possibility of always being able to vote your conscience, not having to game the system, and to lower negativity, which actually there's data supporting this, where it's happened around the country. So, but as you've heard many times, many ways, we can't even have this serious conversation in Thurston County because we're a non-charter county. And you've also heard, and it's so exciting, that there is robust movement in the state legislature to amend state laws so that we ourselves can have that conversation. The state is not in our way to do that. And Commissioner Edwards, I couldn't agree with you more that you have a quote, I wrote it down. And you asked in such a fun way, is it that, is it because that, it causes a rub when you challenge the system? Yeah, I think that's perfectly poetically said. So here's the situation. The, we have the Local Options Bill that has been mentioned. It would amend state law so we could have the conversation. It's a permissive bill. It's not forcing anybody to have these conversations. There, we've been at this for several years in the state legislature. I'm very happy to report that it has bipartisan support. It has cleared many, it has advanced from the major committees. It has had not only our support, but the support of the League of Women Voters, Washington for Equitable Representation, which is a multiracial coalition of groups. Student groups have popped in when we've lobbied for bills that we didn't even know about that are just there in Eastern Washington saying, yes, this would be a good bill. And so actually, to your question, we do, we are coming to you with an ask. You saw on the Betsy slide, there have been five cities, no, seven city councils, I think, that have offered a resolution in support of the Local Options Bill. And we would like Thurston County to do this as well. We think it's a great time for you all to be thinking about this. We know there's conversation about moving to a five-member commission. So there's all kinds of generic reasons to be thinking big and bold. And so what we would like to do is follow up with you all to give you draft legislation of the resolutions that have been passed around the state. We would like to work with your staff, give you a couple months to think about it. We'd like to come back in October and ask for you to make this resolution, if not before. So now I'm gonna be, oh, and just lastly, I want to say that I just really wanna thank you so much for giving us this chance. And a special shout out to Mary Hall because you have been a part, Mary, of our own learning curves and always a great resource to give us a reality check and keep us grounded on what is real. So great company we're in today. And commissioners, you all have been such great leaders in your different realms. And here's another chance to lead. So I'm gonna be quiet now and we'll go back to your questions.
Katie, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Commissioner Muhia. Just briefly, before you dive back into questions, I wanted to follow up and say, Commissioner Edwards, I heard you clearly, you're far from an endorsement and currently considering questions and exploration of like, what does this look like? And given the perspective you shared about what's happening in Olympia, I wonder if you might have a similar perspective on what's happening across the states and leaning? And so just a reminder that this is a permissive bill. We're not asking for your endorsement of ranked choice voting. We're asking for your endorsement to give our county the authority to have this conversation outside of a charter. And so I would encourage you to think of it that way, that like, it doesn't mean that you're committing or endorsing anything about this. It means that you're giving our county and yourself as a commissioner more authority locally in our local decision making. So, thank you.
I'm interested in hearing from my seatmates, I guess. I know, you all know that we never talk about anything here in the office unless we're in a meeting like this. So it isn't like we've talked about this, you know, an hour ago in the hallway or anything. So I guess that's what I'm waiting for, to hear what they've got to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Muhia, answer questions?
Yeah, two quick ones from Mary and then some general ones maybe for the group. So Mary, why did Pierce County, are they still doing what you described? Or they just, you just experimented with it? If they just experimented with it, why didn't they keep going with it?
So in 2008, there was a pretty crowded field for the Assessor's race. And Pierce County also had a perpetual candidate that would run for all kinds of offices all the time. And he chose to run for that office and actually got elected. I think it was, to be honest, an anomaly. So they voted it out the next year. You know, I can, I can give a lot of theories of why that happened. I mean, it was a very crowded field with both Democrats and Republicans and they just split the vote too much.
So that's a perfect segue to my bigger points. And it's perfect in a couple ways because I was remembering, I've heard about this at a high level. It intrigues me, but I haven't really, I'm a kind of detailed person and I haven't really dug down into all the scenarios and played them all out. So I don't have an opinion yet. I remember talking about this on a hike with a buddy about five years ago, who's from Pierce County, and he was describing the exact race that you're talking about. And he kind of poisoned my thought about this system because he was showing an example that had happened of how the system had got gained. And that's my biggest fear about this. I'd have to go through scenario after scenario after scenario. Somebody would have to sit down with me and work through the scenarios because I don't understand how this system can't be gamed just like the very imperfect system we have now. I mean, if I have, if you have two viable candidates, let's say, Democrat and Republican, and then you have one completely non-viable, why would I not, as a Democrat, make my second choice the non-viable candidate? So that I don't, so that I can try to, I mean, or all the different scenarios like that? I mean, now we've got, you can, you know, you can, people can run shill candidates that aren't even part of that party. I'm just, that's the problem I'd like to solve. And I mean, I think it's great to have, you know, more choices and diversify. All that stuff is good at a high level, but what I'm most concerned about is a system that's tighter about people, about candidates and parties playing games with our elections by running fake candidates and, you know, I mean, right now, you have the Democrats, you know, and I read in the news, they're like helping the Trump candidates because they think that's a weaker person, you know, they're playing games. And I hate that. So I'm looking for a system that minimizes the ability to play games. And so I would be curious about the specifics of that race in Pierce County and how that crazy, because I, my friend was telling me this was a terrible person that should never be able to hold office and somehow through the mechanics of this RCV system was able to win when he had never won before. So that concerns me greatly.
He wrote an amazing voter pamphlet statement and he was actually a really attractive guy. No, I mean, I'm just being honest. And they just split the vote and they, there were, it was such a huge field of candidates that they could never get past his initial vote, right? And he, he was kind of a crazy guy. And sometimes people choose to vote for that crazy guy, but I think there were a lot of people that were also fooled. So, sure, and I really don't believe you can game ranked choice voting. I think this was just, but yes, Lisa, go ahead.
Thank you so much. And commissioners, thanks for your time today. Lisa Aro here, Executive Director at Fairville, Washington. I actually do live in Washington State. I'm just temporarily stuck in Michigan. Pierce County is a fascinating example, as Mary had the front row seat. And what I have done is had a chance to answer this question about Pierce many times. It's, there are a lot, there's a lot to say, but I'll boil it down for you briefly. Dale Washem.
Lisa, you're very quiet, so just speak as loud as you can.
Thank you. Does this help at all?
Yeah.
Dale Washem, Dale Washem is the candidate in question. And he had the most votes right from the start in that election. Ranked choice voting actually solves vote splitting. But no election method can guarantee the quality of the candidates that we elect. Some of you may, in your lifetime experience, have seen candidates get elected under our current method that you don't think were qualified for office. You don't think they should have been elected. Well, that can happen with any voting method. But what is guaranteed with ranked choice voting is that more than half of the voters need to have agreed on the winner. Under our current system, we can have candidates advance with less than half the votes. And that's the problem that ranked choice voting solves. Dale Washem had, as Mary Hall said, been running year after year. He had been gaining vote share every time he ran. And in that particular race, the county had just decided to remove partisan labels from the office that he was running for, Assessor Treasurer. So voters had no benefit of party affiliation. They had, he had vote, name recognition, and he had the most votes right from the beginning. So if it had been a traditional election, he would have simply won outright. There, so it's, it's a, you know, it was an unfortunate experience for Pierce County, for sure. But to blame it on ranked choice voting was completely wrong. And it is interesting that Pierce County is, was one of four jurisdictions around the country that adopted ranked choice voting in the early, early days. And Mary can tell you, it was early days when she had to help run that election because she didn't have other jurisdictions' best practices to lean on. They had to figure it out. She had to program the computer, do it all. But now, almost 20 years later, we have so many best practices to follow. We're seeing jurisdiction after jurisdiction. And about half the states now are successfully using ranked choice voting. Voters like it and they are keeping it. Four jurisdictions over these last 15 years have done what Pierce County did. Try it and then back away from it. We can see that it does shake things up for establishment candidates. And it can be scary and there can be pushback when it's adopted. But of the four jurisdictions that adopted it and then rescinded it, three have now reinstated it. And Pierce County is the only one left that has tried it, rescinded it, and not yet returned to it. Those other three jurisdictions were Burlington, Vermont, Aspen, Colorado, and Ann Arbor, Michigan, where I happen to be right now. I hope that answers some of your questions.
So what I'm hearing is that that guy winning that election had nothing to do with ranked choice voting. He would have won in a traditional system. So that's good to know. But can you give me a, if somebody were trying to game a ranked choice, give me the worst case scenario, like what, what would be possible to do if somebody were trying to undermine, work the system, play games with it? What flexibilities would allow for that? Is there a worst case scenario you provide?
Yeah, yes, I'm happy to answer that question to the best of my ability and then happy to welcome Mary Hall and others to join. This is actually a conversation that I began with Clark County Auditor Greg Kimsey about four years ago. He came with exactly the same question. And he said, you know, Lisa, I just, I just cannot support ranked choice voting. It looks to me as though it's gonna be a system that can be gamed and I don't think that's gonna be good for democracy. So we had an ongoing conversation over the next three years. And he has now come around to the point that when he, his county Charter Review Commission considered ranked choice voting last year, they called him to testify. And he testified, he told them that he had no concerns at all about ranked choice voting or about his office's availability to implement it. And he has come around to understand that ranked choice voting is actually far less gamable than the current system that we use. It is a vast improvement on all of the sort of tricks and so on that you referred to, you know, under the current system. It can benefit a candidate if they can recruit another person to run who's kind of similar to their opponent. And then vote splitting happens. We've all heard of vote splitting and spoilers and so on. Ranked choice voting solves those problems with vote splitting. It can't happen with ranked choice voting because voters get a chance to consolidate their support behind the candidate that has the broadest consensus. Let me just describe briefly one experience. The 2020 presidential primaries. If you can recall, here in Washington, we all get the same ballot. We have to decide whether we're gonna weigh in on the Republican race or the Democratic race. That's the one election in Washington where we need to pick one of the two parties. That's the one election in Washington where we need to pick one of the two parties. But we all saw that ballot. So if you voted in that race, you know that the Democratic list of candidates was very long here in Washington. There were a lot of candidates on that ballot. There was only one on the Republican side, Donald Trump. So the Democratic race was the interesting one to see. Well, Mary and her colleagues around the state mailed those ballots out two weeks before the election date of March 20th, 2020, I think it was the 20th. 10th, thank you. And so many voters, as we want to do, returned the ballots early. Well, in the last 24, 36 hours before Election Day, a huge number of those Democratic presidential candidates dropped out of the race. So that by the time Mary and her colleagues were counting ballots all around the state, many of the ballots had come in having, those voters had picked a candidate who wasn't even in the race. And the net result was that more than 25% of the ballots that they counted in Washington were wasted, were wasted on a candidate who wasn't even in the race. Other states, there were five other states that allowed voters to use ranked choice voting in that race. And that simply meant that those voters could pick their first choice, but also mark their backup choice. If their first choice candidate dropped out, their vote wouldn't be wasted. Their vote would still count and it did count in those places. That's a simple change, an obvious one. And that's why we're running a bill for using ranked choice voting in presidential primaries here in Washington State going forward. I hope that helps flush out the understanding. The other thing I would say, Commissioners, is that it can be a little difficult to wrap your hand around how ranked choice voting works when it's just being described to you. I think, I always think of it as trying to explain to somebody how to ride a bicycle in words, a little hard to grasp sometimes. So getting a chance to try it can be really beneficial. And then you'll see that if you've ever participated in a caucus, a ranked choice election simply mirrors that. If you happen to pick, your first choice candidate is not viable, then instead of having your vote wasted, you get to support your second choice candidate. That brings more voters into the, having, having, having a say in the outcome of the race. And it leads to less gaming of the system therefore.
I would like to see, you know, like, I'm sure this exists, but you know, some sort of mathematical statistician at some university that's run every scenario and all the possible, you know, because that's what they're going to do at the Republican Democratic Parties, right? They're going to, they'll spend any amount of money to figure out how to make the system work for themselves. And so I would like to, you know, I'd like to see somebody that's just studied it in every angle and said, this is the, you know, no system's perfect, but this is the best way to avoid, and it can't be systematically gamed in a way that, you know, that's fatal, like a fatal flaw to the system. And if I saw all of that, I mean, I like the idea, like you say, of not wasting your vote and having more choice and having a second choice. I like it personally, but I don't trust, you know, that everyone votes in the way, doesn't think the way I do. So I just have to make sure that I'm not doing something like your friend in Clark County that has unintended consequences that I just hadn't thought through well enough because I really haven't thought this through with the scenarios and all of that. You know, I've just sort of heard about the virtues, which sound great, but obviously it's a big change.
This is a, this is an election reform that has been much studied over the last 20 years and there's a tremendous amount of research that's demonstrating, I think, you know, all the questions that you have can be well addressed. So we can absolutely send you a follow-up for that.
Thank you. Oh, just a quick follow-up on Commissioner Menzger. He articulates my concerns way better than I think I did. And we don't see eye to eye often on philosophy issues about this or that that we often end up voting on. And yet we oftentimes are very similar in our concerns, I think. So I do think that it's kind of like, there was a mention of cost, this would be cheaper and that kind of thing. I don't think we should do democracy based on what's cheaper. Freedom is not free. It's, there's a large cost to it. None of us would be here today if it wasn't for our military willing to step forward and keep us free. And I utilize that as an example all the time. Really, if you want to have efficiency, a benevolent king is probably the best way to go, but you don't know what his replacement's going to do. You know, so anyway, we've got a long way to go and I don't want to hog the time because I see the chair has got probably some concerns as well. Interesting concept, but I'm a long ways from being there.
So out of all of my seatmates, I think, or I believe I'm the one who knows the most about the fair vote ranked choice voting, just because I, I delved myself really deep into kind of what it was and how it was working. My question is in regards voter turnout. We are seeing kind of low turnouts across the state. Voters who are kind of disgruntled with the system, so they're, or disgruntled with the candidates. And so we're not seeing as many voters. And I'm wondering, in the places that have ranked choice voting, you know, after they switched, did their voter turnout stay the same? Did it go down? Did it go up? And can you explain a little bit on that?
Commissioner Mahia, I think maybe I'm the best positioned to answer that briefly. We have not been able to determine a causation between ranked choice voting and voter turnout. Researchers haven't, haven't determined that. Ranked choice voting is associated with a roughly 10%, on average roughly 10% increase in voter turnout. But as folks mentioned earlier on the call, many of the places that use ranked choice voting also combine the primary and the general into a single election. It's not, that's not required. Ranked choice voting can be used in a primary and then followed by a use in the general election. It's used in many different places around the country. But because so many places do combine those two, they're using ranked choice voting, and because general elections have higher turnout already, it's hard to tease apart what impact ranked choice voting is having. But it is the case that places, for example, New York City last summer, that are using ranked choice voting typically are seeing the highest turnout that they've ever seen. Now, that's also the case with voting in general in the last, you know, few years. So again, as I said, it's been difficult to determine the causation there. What we do know is ranked choice voting absolutely is not diminishing voter turnout. It certainly is not doing that. We are seeing higher turnout. Anecdotally, we also hear from voters saying that they like ranked choice voting. Upwards of 85, 90% of voters in exit surveys report that they like it and that they feel that their vote carries more weight, that they have more say, they have a more nuanced voice in the elections and that they're therefore more engaged.
Thank you. Now I want to touch on, you know, for some, voting is, is hard, especially when it comes to marginalized communities, people who don't speak the language. And I'm trying to discern the difficulty of ranked choice voting for those folks who already struggle with voting. And can, can we talk a little bit about kind of the process on that? And, and is there any data on that?
I'll be glad to start because I am familiar with the data. One of the first important things to note is that voters do not have to vote any differently when they have a ranked ballot. They can still just pick their favorite and be done. There is never a requirement to rank. And they have just as much say as they do now, when they, if they just pick one. So we continue to find, again, exit surveys, this is being well-studied. There are something on the order of 12 to 15 million American voters now that are using ranked choice voting regularly in their elections in about half the states, as I said. And there's a lot of research going on. And the consistent finding is that, again, on the order of 85% of voters will say, even on their first use, that ranked choice voting was simple to understand. So, and we are finding in fact that there are typically fewer errors on the ranked choice voting races than are typically made on the ballot. So we're actually finding lower rates of ballot error, slightly lower, not dramatically difference, but people will make errors when they vote. And, and, and we're not seeing an increase in the ranked choice voting races. A lot of it has to do with using best practices for ballot layout and ballot design so that it can be very, you know, as clear as possible to voters. And there's certainly a huge role for voter education. It will be imperative for Washington State jurisdictions that, that implement ranked choice voting to make a robust commitment to voter education. We also find that candidates have a high incentive to make sure that voters understand how to use those ranked ballots. But at the end of the day, what we find is that ranked choice voting is really very simple to use. We are used to ranking our choices all the time. If you go to the donut shop this morning and they don't have your favorite maple bar, well, you can have your backup choice. We're just used to that. So voters understand how to rank their preferences.
Thank you. Okay, it is 9:58. Any questions, comments?
Yes, I have one more. I have one more too. Oh. Well, it's not, I just, Mary, you said, I was just curious about, it seems like if we were to do this today, you, the way that your machines would work and your system, you said it would, you could do it, but I'm, it just seems to me like there'd be a cost to, like, how do you, you have to run them back through again? I mean, how does it, how would it work with, with, with your physical apparatus of your ballot processing center and stuff?
You are a mute, Mary. We use a system called ESNS, Election Systems and Software. And it would simply be buying a different, a separate module that we would use to conduct it, but, and laying our ballot out differently. But we could have all the same, all the races, even plurality and ranked choice voting on the same ballot. So, you know, yes, it'd be a training opportunity for staff and we would need to really look at procedures, but I don't think it would, I don't see it as being a big lift. I have a lot of knowledge about how ranked choice voting works and the nuances and there are a lot more guidelines. And I'm sure as more counties adopt it, they'll probably be writing things into whack also. So I, I don't have any big concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner.
On the ranked choice voting on the second, your second choice, is that always count as a full vote? Or to get around that situation that happened in Pierce County, could you implement something like, well, your second choice only gets half of them? Or some way to prevent what looks like to me a nightmare of the wrong person getting in? And, and I wonder about the primary moving to the general because I look at that as the ability for the voters to take a second look at the situation and not end up, and the cost should not be the deciding factor on that. But make sure you don't end up with a nod here in that position that you don't want in there.
Well, I, and can I, I can follow up. Like, that's a concern to me too because let's say you've got three or four Democrats, just as an example, for a position, you're going to force them to scramble and try to raise enough money to win an election and, you know, trying to soak Democratic donors all the way through to November? Or is this election decided in August? Because part of what the primary does is win it down to the two most viable candidates and then they can go after their money in their, in their political bases. And not having all those donations split up and having more and more candidates trying to raise enough money to win a countywide election in November. So I think that increases problems.
Several great questions here. Let me start with one really quickly. Commissioner Edwards, thank you so much for articulating your question about how many votes a voter would have with a ranked choice ballot. Each voter has exactly one vote, just like now. You do not have multiple votes with ranked choice voting. You simply have an opportunity to give your backup. Think of my example about donut shop. When you go in and ask for a maple bar and they're all out and you take your second choice, old-fashioned glazed, you're still going to just get one donut. You just got your backup because your first choice wasn't viable. Same with ranked choice. So when you cast your ballot, Commissioner Edwards, if you pick a candidate who is going to be one of the, you know, if you pick the winner is your first choice, you happen to pick the winner, then your vote is never going to transfer to your second choice. Your candidate that you picked is going to, is going to be counted in every round of counting until the end and when they win. So the only people who have their vote transferred to their next choice are people who picked a candidate who didn't have enough support to continue into the next round. It's a little easy, it's a little bit like riding the bicycle, a little bit easier to see if we can actually run you through a ranked choice election. Mary Hall might have a better way to explain it because she's done this before. She conducted that Olympia election. She actually hand counted the ballots for that vacancy elections, demonstrating how in each round she would eliminate the candidate with the fewest votes. And then the second choices on the ballots for the eliminated candidate would transfer to those voters' next choices.
Who, let me just ask one real quick. Who voted in that, in that race? Other city council person? Oh, well, that made it pretty simple. I mean, compared to.
It was not the voters.
Yeah, okay. So it was a councilmatic deal. That makes more sense how that would be a lot easier to do. Okay.
Commissioner Edwards, you were intuiting, there are other voting methods. There are methods that each, each candidate you rank has a certain score and you would add up all the points and so on. That is not ranked choice voting and I'm so glad you raised your question.
So I need to jump off to another meeting, but Commissioners, I'm always happy to talk about ranked choice voting. It's a, it's a fun discussion.
Thank you, Mary.
It's great seeing everybody.
I want to be the king though, for that.
Thank you. You know, for me, my, you know, I ran in a seven candidate race and there was a lot of people on either side, there was a lot of pressure for a lot of candidates, asking them to drop out because of the way they would split the vote. And, and so, you know, this is when I started really looking into what ranked choice voting was, just because of the outside pressures that candidates also face from their own individual parties to not run. And for me, I think a democracy is places where people decide to run for office, even though they may not be qualified sometimes, you know, but I think that's kind of one of the greatest things that, you know, democracy has to offer is, is the ability to do so without having to face pressures from political parties to not participate. And so, thank you so much for your presentation today. As you see, there were a lot of questions and probably more to come. So I, I thank you for, for taking your time this morning. It is 10:05. We are adjourned.